Right, good evening, everybody, colleagues. We'll just get started for this meeting. So first of all, Chair's announcements, there are no announcements. Are there any declarations of interest in the first part of this meeting? No, none. So minutes of the last meeting on the 13th of December. Is everybody happy that they're correct record? Councilor Thompson.
So just I wanted to mention a typo on page seven at the top, where the sum should be 3.685 million. I think the M has been dropped off, that's all.
Sorry, petitions and questions, we have none. And in which case we move to item five. Now, item five is a Part One report with reference to Part Two papers. Can I ask councillors present if they wish to raise any questions or queries on the Part Two reports? Because if you don't wish to raise any of the Part Two reports in the meeting, I suggest we just deal with it in Part One. Otherwise, I might suggest that we do items six and seven, and then go into Part Two for the rest of the Business of Policy Committee. If subsequently you think you need to, then we can obviously, you know, stop the meeting and clear the room. But I'm going to progress then that we're going to deal with all of the, item five, the Minster Quarter Central in Part One. Miss G, if you'd just like to come over and introduce the report, thank you. Oh, there you go. The purpose of the report this evening is to announce or to bring to the committee the outcome of the competitive process for negotiation procurement for the selection of a developer for Minster Quarter Central in Reading Town Centre. So Minster Quarter Central is a strategically significant regeneration scheme for the town centre. In June 2021, Policy Committee approved marketing of the site and the search for a development partner. In July 2022, Committee agreed to a strategic vision for the site, supported by a set of minimum requirements and development principles, which bidders could be assessed against. So those minimum requirements were to deliver 30% compliant, planning policy compliant levels of affordable housing, high quality public realm and a net zero carbon development. The development principles supporting that were to enhance the setting of the Hexagon Theatre, to divest long term liability with the creation of an estate management company, and to contribute to the successful delivery of a master plan for the wider Regen area. So the mechanism chosen to dispose of the land was a land disposal supported by a development agreement. That gives us the opportunity to give a greater level of certainty on delivering key ambitions of the council through the development. So Reading Borough Council, supported by legal and commercial advisers, have led work over the last couple of years to find that developer, to deliver this transformative scheme for Reading, following a competitive process with negotiation. Shortlisted bidders submitted their best and final offers to the council in October 2023, and those offers and associated proposals have been subject to a detailed evaluation scoring by a range of technical specialists. So for commercial reasons, the names of those bidders cannot be disclosed until committees made its decision. Hence, you have a Part One and Part Two today. I think that's about it, Chair. Part One, nice. So Councilor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank the officers for their incredible work. As you could tell, it was an incredible amount of paperwork to get through, which only shows the robust efforts that were made in setting out a bidder that I believe and hope, and I think we all can certainly hope on a day like today, will achieve everything that we set out in the Minster Quarter area outline development framework back in 2018, and the aims that the officer expressed this evening, in so far as a net zero carbon development, a high quality public realm, and all of the things that we aspire to. This is really a project that has the ability to nip back the civic heart of Reading. And I think there's every reason to be very hopeful. I'm very pleased with the robust level of scrutiny that this has been undertaken. And I welcome and entirely look forward to the upcoming years as this progresses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rowland. Councilor White.
Thank you, Chair. As Green councillors, we've got a number of concerns about selecting the recommended developer. As has been said, much of the detail is contained in confidential reports, but I'm happy to talk generally. I'm concerned that there are some important unanswered questions in the net zero plans for the buildings on the site. What would be handy is a climate impact assessment for this development. This is a standard section on reports, and the council's climate impact assessment tool gives councillors a standardised way of comparing initiatives. Unfortunately, this hasn't been done for this particular item. I accept that there's a lot of information in the confidential reports, but it would be handy to have had that section completed in a way that's standardised and comparable with other initiatives that the council has coming forward. I don't think residents are getting the best deal on affordable housing. I am concerned that as councillors, we're making a decision this evening, and then assuming everything goes well with the winning bidder, Policy Committee doesn't get a chance to have a final say on the designs, because of course what we've seen so far is not final designs. And this is important, because the final designs could look significantly different to what's in the current bid. So if Policy Committee could make sure we had a development that far exceeds our policies, whereas Planning Committee only has to make sure the development meets our policies. So what I would like is for Policy Committee to have a final say in the future on the final designs. And if that's the case, then happy to support it this evening. If we're delegating that away tonight, then I'll oppose the recommended action.
Councilor Bartlett-Ward, I know you want to speak. I know you're online this evening because you're not very well, but we'd like to come in now.
Thank you, Chair, and yes, thank you for letting me join online and keep my germs to myself this evening. Obviously, some people are never going to be happy with anything and will make increasingly desperate attempts to try and pick holes. But I am very excited that this has come forward today. I think from a leisure and culture point of view, it brings forward a fantastic setting for the Hexagon. It's an area of the town that hasn't had the love and care that it's needed. It's taken a while to bring this forward since the civic offices closed, and so it's really exciting that we're in a position to move forward today. Of course, we also have the Hexagon Studio Theatre coming forwards with our levelling up project as well. And it's going to make such a fantastic environment for people to live and work and to enjoy culture and leisure and the best that Reading has to offer. I'm also really pleased to see in the report that we are committed to working with Blue Collar and with The Market. They've done some fantastic work enlivening that area of town, and it's a much loved business. And so it's great that we're making sure that we're working with them as this project develops. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Lang, did you?
Chair, can I use Chair's discretion and come in after the officer? Is that possible to round up? No. Okay, okay. Okay, I thought Councilor Ennis was going first, but yeah. Anyway, glad to see Councilor White's got his tweet out there, Johnny come lately to the project. I've been on this, involved with this, informed by officers since the start of this project. I think it far exceeds all of our strategic principles. High quality public realm exceeds on affordable housing and on mix. And I'm sure during the planning process, as Councilor White did down and undermined the authority of the Planning Applications Committee, I think, you know, we have a very constructive member of the Green Party on it. Councilor Williams is a very valued part of that planning committee. And I'm sure that he will make his views public. They've engaged with stakeholders from the beginning, you know, the Civic Board, which is a cross-party, party membership. I think Councilor Robinson sits on it, and I'm sure has had some valuable input. Getting back to Councilor Rowland's point, this is a major regeneration of a very important part of our town. We have four distinct, in my opinion, four distinct parts of the town that need joining up. We're doing it with the central library at the Civic, and we're trying to make it a fluid from east to west, north to south, so it all works properly. So I will probably be more involved in this during the planning process, but I am absolutely over the moon, you know, not just with the potential of having a bustling market, which I used to work at, probably the only councillor that sort of worked at the market, but always wanted to bring the market back. Always wanted to improve the area. I'm a great fan of Dusseldorf Way. I'd like to see some of the East German architecture maybe kept in place. And yeah, I think this is such a good story. We've got Queen's Walk, we've just got the, I think I referenced it, the sort of arcade thing with the dipping ducks and the temping bowling and all that. It's all going to join up with that. It's going to be a wonderful place. We have to accept that the town is not what it was five years ago, pre-COVID. You know, retails change. That's more to do with Amazon online shopping than it is to do with anything the council's done, but we're trying to improve that, mitigate against those things by offering a better retail offer, more entertainment, and as Adele says, a better cultural offering with live concerts and stuff like that. So let's not knock this, let's just take hold of it as a council, give the officers the credit they deserve and the potential developer, whoever that may be, and let's go forward with this and complete. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Ennis, do you indicate it?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I'd like to thank officers for the report. It's creating a vision in a part of the town that's needed. And I think really it's proof of what the council's done. If you look at previous planning applications, previous developments that the council have done, they have been exceptional in the quest for net zero and environmentalism. I'm thinking of the houses, I'm thinking of the way we've developed our leisure centres, and we won't concentrate on those who always oppose, that's what they do. I think we need to concentrate and reassure the members of the public that this is a great vision, a transformation of our town going forward, which is hugely exciting. And couldn't think of a better way of doing it is the council running it and the way and organising in development and working with the private sector and the community in ensuring that they get the best value and they get the best community assets and the housing is affordable. If you look at page 22, you can see that I'm certainly, as the lead councillor for climate and transport, is that there's a lot of reassurance there about the environmental and climate implications, you know, the highest score. And that's what's been done previously. That's the point, is, you know, okay, nice words, but what have you done? And you can point to a huge number of developments that's taken place that this council has been involved with, and it's been the best for climate strategy. And there might even be some bus lanes for others to vote against, but I'm certainly excited about it, and I thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilor Ennis. Any other councillors indicating want to speak? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to say, we welcome this. It's part of our town that has been overlooked for quite some time. You know, if you walk around that area at night time, it's not good. So I think anything that brings that area up in the world and regenerates that part of Reading is all for the good. So we welcome this and look forward to this development. And as regards the designs, you know, this is something, and I'm sure Councilor Lang would agree, that we will obviously have scrutiny over at planning when it comes. And certainly, we can, you know, take decisions at that point. But we welcome and thank you for the hard work and effort that's gone into this report.
I can't see any other councillors. I mean, just to say, and I'm sure that Councilor Brockley was here to say, that this has been through a long and very robust process. And it is the nature of it, is that we're getting to a development agreement. The actual final designs will always rest in planning. And Councilor White, you should know that. There's been plenty of opportunities for councillors to be involved, and the Civic Board and others to see it on its way through. I think that it would be natural to have some reservations about the absolute detail of it at this point, as anyone would, but that's the point. It's a development agreement based on a robust process that has secured huge, huge improvements for this area and benefits to Reading residents. Affordable housing surpasses anything we've probably secured on any of the development ever before. So I don't really understand Councilor White's point here in reference to that. And, you know, I think we should just note that, you know, it's been robust. It's got us to a really good place. We know that some things can change in the future, because the world doesn't stay the same. If, for example, at planning stage, there was something that affected viability, for example, in some significant way, we'd have another report back. But really, we don't need to keep having reports back now. That area needs the regeneration. We need to seize the opportunity that this long and robust process has presented to us. It brings great benefits to people in Reading, to the council as well. It deals with an area that needs some proper management and oversight as it comes forward. It will enhance the work we're doing at the Hexagon. There's a sort of what's not to like about it, really. So I think we have to welcome the work that's been done to get us to here. So it's a really important decision that we're making. So I am just going to say that, you know, go through the recommendations. And we're asked to note recommendations, I think, one to seven. And then in eight, we're being asked to declare the former Civic Centre, Civic Car Parks A and B surplus to requirements. A point, most importantly, bidder B for the Minster Quarter regeneration on the basis that it can deliver the best, it can best deliver against the council's required key outcomes, and that their bid represents best consideration within section 1, 2, 3 of the Local Government Act 1972. And I think we'll just take as read 10, 11 with its subparts there. Can I ask the committee, do you agree with the recommendations? Any dissent? Councilor White, to put it on the record.
Thank you. This report provides an update to the Committee on Progress Against the Council's Tackling Inequality Strategy. This strategy was adopted in January 2023. Whilst the headlines may talk of the inflation rate declining, the cost of living crisis has by no means gone away. Therefore, this strategy, with its focus on helping residents, remains absolutely key. It aims to increase attainment in skills, education and training to enable residents to access quality employment at its core. Given this focus, partnership working is key, with Brighter Futures for Children, Reader and New Directions College playing leading roles in the action plan set out in the appendix. Equally important is our partnership work with voluntary and community sector organisations. And the report notes the alignment to the recently adopted VCS Compact. In addition, the focus is the key driver for activities in our place-based pilot areas of Church and Whitely, where there has been significant amount of engagement, which is now informing a pipeline of proposed activities and projects which will come forward in 2024. These will, of course, be incorporated in future reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Handford. And councillors indicating, Councilor McEwen, did you want to speak?
Just while I'm talking quickly. Thank you, Chair. I really welcome this report and the updated strategy. The strategy aims to support our residents to become more resilient and aims to support our residents realising their potential through accessing employment opportunities, through building on strong skills and training. I really welcome the partnership working, as mentioned, with the different organisations and New Directions, Brighter Futures and Reader, and obviously voluntary organisations. And I really particularly welcome the place-based pilots. As a churchward councillor, it's, you know, it's really good to read the work that's ongoing and the, I particularly like the community engagement, you know, connecting with our residents and communities, with the aim of building strong relationships and collaborating with our residents and encouraging skills and, you know, hopefully future services and activities for our residents. So thank you, I welcome the update.
Councilor Lang?
Thank you, Chair. Expressing interest, obviously, in one of the Whitely Ward councillors. Along with Councilor McEwen's churchward councillor has stated, of course, I agree with everything she said. I'll focus on the place-based stuff and the extension of another two years. I'd just like to say, as a resident of Whitely, sometimes we can be a bit wary of outsiders coming in and telling us what's good for us, you know, sort of like, particularly on the left, we can be a bit paternalistic with our policies. This one, totally different, and it's probably why it's taken a good time to get this far, because I think the main focus, as it should be, has been about engagement and getting people involved. I think we've listed 120 ambassadors, and I know as a ward councillor how hard it is sometimes to engage unless somebody needs us or they're angry with us or, you know, like that. We know it works. So I think officers have recognised this, you know, it hasn't always happened in the past, but it's happening this time. I've been at meetings where we've had people queuing at the door, which is quite unusual. And I think they've engaged with a lot of the stakeholders of the Whitely Community Development Association, and I think they're very on board with it. Two distinct areas in the place-based, sorry if I'm rattling on about, and also, I always call it Redder, I don't know why, not Reader. But anyway, they do their excellent stuff through their ESPs, which obviously I've got an interest in. So where are we? Yes, really, really good. We've almost been able to take a hands-off approach as councillors, because it's gone by itself. We haven't had to push it. We haven't had to go, we don't think you're doing this, we don't think, because they're doing everything, everything they should do, you know. And the detail, anyway, I'm waffling on. From a councillor point of view, we're always interested in leverage, what we can do to get more funding or, you know, be involved and such like. What this place-based focus has enabled us to do particularly is go up to other outside organisations, private business developers, and go, look, the council is funneling everything it can, all its efforts in, not necessarily financial, but efforts, you know, officer time to really try and lift these areas. I'm not saying lift the area, as in it needs lifting, but just to help and support and ask the residents what they really, really need. We've seen businesses come forward. We've seen extra finances come in from other places other than the council, and it's enabled us to get our new temporary Whitely Wood Community Centre. So I think it's actually trying, it's actually thinking in now, and I always rattle on about residents' perception of the place they live, you know, or we don't care, or nobody cares about us, shrug their shoulders and get on with it. But they're finally taking note that, yeah, you are paying attention to us, you are listening, we're not always happy with you, but at least you're listening this time and we can be part of it. So let's not knock it. And I think this two-year extension will enable us to see the fruits of what we're doing now. You know, we always ask for more meat on the bone when reports come. This hasn't necessarily got the depth, because this is a growing thing. I'm so glad it's carrying on, I think it's really good. And I did have my doubts at the start, I did, honestly. So anyway, thank you, Chair.
I looked up and saw you both at the same time, so I'm going to call Councilor Robinson first. Thank you, Councilor White.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly welcome this. Anything that assists people with learning new skills and getting a better grasp of opportunities that come along is excellent, in my opinion. Great to see that the partnerships are working, that have been set up. My question, and I think it's in part been answered by Councilor Lang, is around how much partnership takes place, not just with the communities, but with business as a whole? Because at the end of the day, it's the industry that should be dictating what the future skills are that people will need moving forwards. I mean, obviously, we've got AI, we've got a great deal happening in the world of IT. So I'm just wondering, are they actively feeding into this? So that, you know, what skills are going to be of use are being taught and passed on to the residents? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Robinson. I think I'll take Councilor White, and then I'll come back to Mr Handford. Councilor White?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the update report. Greens think inequality in Reading is a massive injustice. People in the richest part of town live 10 years longer than people in the poorest part, and unfortunately, it has been getting worse compared to other bits of the country. Reading used to have two areas in the 10% most deprived in the country, and this has more than doubled to five. As Green councillors, we support this work, and we definitely support applying the lessons learned across the town. Thank you.
Did you want to just come back specifically on, perhaps, to Robinson's point, if you can answer?
I mean, I can give a brief response. I think there's always work for us to do further engagement. The focus has definitely been on residents and community organisations first. But we have been doing work with, and that includes sponsors and senior officers and councillors with things like the studios just at the south, and making sure that we are working with them to understand the skills needs there. And that's feeding into work that the college are doing around helping people enter that work space in terms of the skills to freelance and things, which is essential for that industry. We've also worked with businesses on Green Park, just across the way, to make sure they understand our focus on these place-based pilots and to get input from them in terms of the skills and experience they're looking for. So yes, but there's always work, always opportunity for us to do more. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Thank you very much. I mean, I think I'll just say, as the report's actually in my name, is that place-based working does take time. And, you know, we've had the opportunity to extend essentially the pilots. And I think, Councilor White, you commented before that, you know, two years isn't very long. And I would agree with that. Of course, it's all about what resources are available. But this does give us the opportunity to get on the ground and really learn and understand in a place where we can see people aren't perhaps doing as well as we would like them to do. They do have a choice about that, and I think that's the important thing. What we determine is someone's quality of life is, you know, different to what their choice about quality of life is, and we should respect that too. But clearly, there's opportunities to raise skills and education attainment levels. And we can see in the report that a lot of work is being done, is going on there in terms of on the schools front. But also, we're really fortunate to have New Directions in this area, as it happens anyway, and it's a great resource for the whole town and brilliant at, you know, enabling adult learners actually to look at where they are with their life and what they might need next in order to just be more fulfilled for themselves, but also in terms of future employment opportunities that they might want to take up. And we've got lots of things like the film industry, we've got, you know, the green agenda. There's lots of areas in which we need to help and direct people into, not just young people into learning, but also adults too. So my only point really, and Mr Handford knows this, is that I think it's really important that we spend the time on the ground, getting to know the place, the people and understand the needs. getting to know the place, the people and understand the needs. I think what we need to see as we go forward is who's getting access then to the education and skills opportunities? What employment opportunities are being created? And just see a few measures in the future that just help us understand that the pilots are actually being impactful in all sorts of ways, including moving people on in their lives in a way that they want to, but also helps them to be able to make their own choices in the future because they're independent and resilient. And that means getting skills and education, et cetera. So we'll see what happens. But thank you very much, Mr Handford. Do we all agree to note the report and that the pilots extended further?
Thank you, Chair. This report asks the permission of the committee to replace me as director on the board of Bright Futures for Children with Shona Douglas. If you recall, this time last year, the committee was advised that it was probably a holding position on the board to make that appointment. And it was pending the different restructures that were going on in the areas of social care. The former executive director, who's got a great deal of experience in the field, has sat on the board before and, of course, brings a lot of experience and knowledge of children's services, is willing to serve again in that advisory capacity. And arrangements have been made for that appointment to cover for a year.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Hoskin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, I'd just like to welcome this. I'd like to thank Mr Graham for his service to the board. But no disrespect to yourself. I think Shona Douglas will be a great appointment. I worked with her as she was director here previously and she was on the board. And she brought a lot to that. I think this is a really pragmatic solution to cover off this appointment without taking away. Because it is a really important appointment. It's really important in terms of how it relates the board to the company, to the council. But it's also really demanding as well. And so I think having Shona Douglas doing it rather than our own director actually is a really pragmatic thing to do and I welcome it.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I certainly welcome it too. I remember feeling quite sad when Shona left the council. So to welcome her back in this role, I think, is a great boost to the council and to brighter futures. So more than happy to back this.
Thank you. Can we agree the recommendations as printed? Thank you very much. Our part two on the agenda, so I need to read the exclusion out. So that pursuant to section 100A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended, members of the press and public be excluded during consideration of the following items on the agenda, as it is likely that there would be a disclosure of exempt information as defined in the relevant paragraphs of part one of schedule 12A as amended of that act.